All right, we move on to the next section. This is a special board meeting of the San Benito C I S D Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. The time is 6:35, and I call this meeting to order. We begin with roll call. Mario Silva.
Present.
Oscar Medrano.
Present.
Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Frutoso M. Gomez.
Present.
Orlando Lopez. Teresa Cervellón.
Present.
Stephen Weller.
Present.
And I'm here. We do have a quorum. So we move on to action agenda item 2.1, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval to Accept Gifts and Bequests for the 2022-2023 School Year. Ms. Cervellón?
Yes, sir. I ask that the board approve the gifts and bequests for 2022-2023 as presented.
Board members, do I have any questions? If not, Ms. Cervellón has made a recommendation to approve gifts and bequests for the 2022-2023 school year as presented. Do I have a motion?
No.
We have a motion by Oscar Medrano. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Item 2.2, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval of Purchases Over $25,000. Ms. Cervellón?
Yes, I recommend to the board that we approve purchases over $25,000 as presented.
Board members, are there any questions? Ms. Cervellón has made a recommendation to, that we approve the purchases over $25,000 as presented. Do I have a motion?
No.
We have a motion by Mario Silva. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Frutoso Gomez. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Next item on the agenda, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval of Budget Amendments for the 2022-2023 School Year. Ms. Cervellón?
Yes, I recommend the board approve budget amendments for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Are there any questions, board members? Ms. Cervellón has made a recommendation that we approve the budget amendments for the 2022-2023 school year. Do I have a motion?
No.
We have a motion by Dr. Cruz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, item 2.4, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval of Selecting an Insurance Consultant for RFP 0323, Insurance Consultant for Employee Health Benefits. Ms. Cervellón?
Yes, sir. So tonight, we have the consultants here that are prepared to present to the board so that we can give you options on what's best for our district and for our employees, most importantly. So with that being said, I think we're prepared to start with the first presenter.
I'm going to bring in the rep from Faber International. He's going to be the first one to present, and then I'll bring the other three after that.
It's HUB International. Correct? HUB International?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Board President Moreno, Superintendent Saviano. I'm Randy McGraw with HUB International, and thank you for allowing me to go first. And it's a pleasure to be here to describe our capabilities and presentation for you. So I have some paper handouts for you. And if we go to page number two, I thought I'd just tell you a little bit about HUB International. We're one of the top, we're the top fifth-largest broker in the world based on revenues that come into HUB. We have over 15,000 employees, over a million customers, and we collect and manage about $23 billion in premium. On the next page, you'll see our offices located here in Texas. So HUB is a multinational corporation headquartered in Chicago. Our Texas offices are headquartered in Fort Worth, as you can see here on this list. These are the office locations we have in El Paso. Our public sector consulting practices are administered out of El Paso, which is where I'm located, as well as in our Dallas-Fort Worth area office as well. We do have two HUB offices located here in the area, one in Harlingen and one in McAllen. And this is a local agency that HUB purchased last year. It's formerly known as Shelter, Walter, and King. And they provide a comprehensive set of insurance and brokerage services as well. But our public sector practices are based, as I said, in El Paso and in Dallas. On the next page, I just have a description from our website that shows our capabilities and practices that we have centered in employee benefits. Our web access is easy to access. It's hubinternational.com. And if you navigate to employee benefits, you'll find all of these links there. All of our information and content is available publicly. It's not, it's not password-protected, so anybody can go there and look at our webinars and our seminars and our legal briefs and compliance briefs and things like that, too. On our next page, we've got a description of our practice based out of El Paso. So I have two key team members that work with me. There's Patrick Avila, who is our account executive, and Debbie Lopez is our Director of Data Analytics. We're also sanctioned by Region 19 Education Service Center and the Allied States Cooperative, and that would allow public entities like yourselves or any public entities in Texas or across the country can contract with us directly through Region 19 by way of an inter-local agreement, and that would satisfy your purchasing requirement. So we've been vetted by a lot of different entities. The next page shows our leadership team. I'm there kind of at the top in the middle. You see the managers I report to corporately, and then my team below us, below me, Debbie and Patrick. And then also our other specialty practices that we have, and one that plays a key role in employee benefits is Jack McStravic, our Chief Compliance Officer that oversees compliance. The next page I have is a listing of our current, in our practice, list of school districts that currently engages for consulting purposes. You can see that our oldest client goes back to 1998, and then quite a few different school districts that we've conducted business with, including El Paso Independent School District since 2003, and then recently the Socorro Independent School District. And Dr. Carmen says hello, so I'm on Friday. So we've got experience in school districts. We've stood the test of time, of bid cycles as people go out and vet our services, and we've survived a lot of bid cycles, and that's because we deliver a quality work product. The next page is a listing of our other public entities located throughout the state of Texas. It's sideways, but we have over 60 other public entities that HUB offices manage the benefits for across the state. On the next page, a question of why should you select HUB? Well, one of the things is we're leaders in innovation, and in 2019, it was our office in conjunction with the El Paso Independent School District that created the first alternate benefit plan to TRS Active Care. And El Paso ISD, as you can see on that chart at the bottom with the map, in 2019 was the only district in the state that offered an alternate plan. By 2020, you can see all the other shaded areas across the state where the school districts copied our approach and created alternate plans to compete against TRS Active Care. That led to, in 2021, legislative action initiated by TRS to change the rules on TRS, and some of those included an ability for districts to leave TRS as opposed to create alternate plans, and changed the rules on when you join TRS. And it also created what's called regional rating. Prior to 2021, TRS charged one rate across the state for the same plan for everybody, and for nine years, we had been petitioning them to say, "That's not fair." The cost of health care in San Benito is different than it is in Dallas or Houston. And so for those of us that live in lower-cost health care areas, we've been subsidizing TRS, if you remember, of that. So it was through our initiative that triggered all of the changes that are out there to demonstrate our knowledge and capability in working with school districts. On our next page, specifically in your solicitation asks for support to help you manage a bid process with your current administrator Blue Cross Blue Shield. And so this just runs down a listing of the things that we do and our due diligence to complete the RFP process there. And it would be a tight turnaround, because I understand that your contract anniversary date is October the 1st. So on the next page, I put together a sample timeline of things that would need to take place to kind of give you an idea of the scope of the project and how quickly we would want to get started. And so my timeline begins today, and then you can follow the path there that would lead you to a project culmination by your board meeting in August, which allows just under 60 days prior to the anniversary date. So it would impress upon you, regardless of who you select to be your advisor in the process, you need to get started quickly if you want to do a good thorough job. And then finally, in our proposal to the district, we did include our price proposal for just the RFP portion of the process, but there are a lot of other things that you identified in the, in the RFP that looked like they were of interest to you, ongoing consulting, managing the rates, measuring results, and things of that nature. And so all of our clients contract with us for our full, robust, comprehensive set of services across the board, and we'd be happy to do that for you as well. So we put pricing information on there. If you would like to retain us on an ongoing basis, we have a fee that was included in the proposal for your consideration as well, but we're happy to do the RFP project for you if that's the only thing that you want to have done. We're in the middle of finalizing an RFP for Laredo ISD right now, and I need to get back to El Paso tonight because we have a review process going on with that school district on Friday to get ready. So be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Board members, any questions? No? Mr. McGraw, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. While they're pulling up the presentation, my name is Eric Smith with Smith &amp; Associates Consulting. I am the Smith in Smith &amp; Associates. So the buck kind of stops with me when, when we talk about these things. I'll give you a little overview of who we are and then talk about a little bit about our proposal response. Who are we? We're an independent consulting firm, not a brokerage house, which means we work for the school district. We don't have any allegiance or ties to any insurance companies. We have to work with all of them because of what we do, but we have no allegiance or ties to them. They don't pay us. We get paid by you. I've been doing this for almost, it says 25-plus, it's close to 28 years. I actually started as an underwriter, underwriting group clients, so that's how I got my experience of being able to, to set rates and build plan designs. We do nothing but K through 12. In the past, I did some municipality work with cities, but for about the last 10 or 12 years, it's been nothing but K through 12. It says up there we're boutique by design. That doesn't mean small. It just means I'm not the biggest in the world, and I do that on purpose. I want to be able to service my clients. My name is on the ledger, and that means we're going to take care of you, and we're going to service you, otherwise my name's not going to be up there. So that's what boutique means. We have, we design each product separately for each district. We sit down and get to know you, learn who you are. We're not going to cookie cutter you. We're going to do everything how it works best for you. So, and because, like I said, my name is on the door. That's a big deal to me, and we're going to service you. Everybody's going to have my cell phone number. They call it, trust me, I got employees calling me almost 24/7, 365, but that's the way it is. That's what we do to take care of folks. I know we're not talking about overall health care design right now, but we do do proactive things to build health care. We try to educate employees. They, if they know how to access health care, it's going to help control costs, and that's the whole key. With costs doing what they're doing today, folks need to understand as much as possible how to do their health care. Our services, and I know we're mostly here to talk about RFP stuff tonight, but we have an entire portfolio. We do benefit plan designs, self-funded and fully insured. My specialty is self-funded plans, setting rates, designing programs to be cost-effective. Vendor management, that's just working with the vendors, making sure any issues come up, claims issues, contract issues, those types of things. We're your, we're your intermediary to help you out on those processes. Of course, monthly reporting. We have one of the first electronic claim audit softwares, so if, if need be, we can go in and audit a self-funded health plan or pharmacy program to make sure claims are being paid correctly. That's something we pride ourselves on. We actually do many audits quarterly to make sure how the claim flow is going. And of course, we've designed wellness programs. I know mostly here today, we're here to talk about RFP processes. Since we do nothing but K through 12, we're very familiar with the process and how it works. You know, each one of our school districts is a little different. Some of them want us to take the complete lead. Some of us want, want us to just help work in concert with the purchasing department or individual staff. We're going to take that direction from you, but we will work with staff developing a specific RFP just for you. It's not going to be cookie cutter. We're not going to use the same one we use everybody else. We will work with the vendors, gathering all the data, all the historical stuff, so that we can design RFPs to going to get to the best cost and value and services for the district. When they come in, we prefer they come to you. I'll come pick them up. I don't want them coming to me. I don't want the perception that something went wrong. So we want them to come here. We'll come pick them up. We'll take them back. We will put them on spreadsheets to determine costs. Look for, we're really good at finding some of those hidden costs that could be hidden in these things, the costs. And then, you know, services. We'll present our findings to whoever down here you ask us to. We'll sit down with you, go through it, develop finalists if you want us to. We'll help schedule those finalist meetings. We'll help, we will run them if you want us to. Come down here and ask the questions as the subject matter experts and work with your staff however you need to to make those determinations. We'll help come up with a recommendation. If need be, I'll stand up here and put my name on the recommendation and make a recommendation to you guys when we're done, after the committee makes the decision. Now comes the fun part, implementation. If you, if you change, that's the big process. So we'll work closely, hand in hand, with your staff, making sure the new vendor, or even the new existing, the existing vendor, if there's any changes, understands what that process is. And we'll, we'll work through all, through the contracting stage, all the way up to go-live. What we do differently is in the RFPs, we state we're going to do a post-implementation audit of both the PBM and the medical carrier. Why? Want to make sure the plans are set up to your specifications. That way, if an employee accesses benefits, they know what they're getting. There's no hidden things. If we don't do that sometimes, those first two or three weeks, we got employee perception problems. They're not, the benefits aren't paid. These aren't right, or that's not right. So we do it on the front end. We build it into the RFP, and so that they understand we're going to come in and try to break the system. We'll run test claims through the system to make sure it works. Do that on the pharmacy side and on the, on the health care side. That way, you know, go-live as much as possible, it's going to be done right. That cuts down on a lot of potential problems and employee headaches. And in the long run, if a program starts off wrong, it's very difficult for them to ever gain the employee's trust back. So if we get it done right the first time, hopefully, we can eliminate that. You're never going to be perfect in an implementation, but we try to eliminate as many of the problems as possible by taking a very proactive, hands-on approach to setting up the implementation. I put this up there because our last great big RFP process, we were hired by Education Service Center, Region 12, to build their purchasing cooperative. They actually have a health care purchasing cooperative that has everything from employee assistance programs, pharmacy benefit managers, fully insured, self-funded carriers, everything you could want. So we were the person, we were the firm that was hired to do that. We built that consortium for them. Their tagline is educators helping educators. It has everything you need. The good thing about that is because of its size, if somebody does happen to join that interlocal, through interlocal, they get the access of being part of 30,000 employees right now and growing. So that helps bring costs down when that happens. But that was the last big RFP process we did. And so this is a little tidbit about how we, how we do that stuff. I'm going to leave you with one last thing. If you don't like my services, you don't pay me. I have a 100% performance guarantee. I've had it for 25 years. I've never paid out on it, not because I skimp, because I haven't had to. But if you don't like our services by the time we're done, you don't pay me, and I'm not going to fight you on it. Because once again, you're not, it's not going to happen, I hope, because my name's on that door, but that's something I offer every one of my clients. 100% performance guarantee at any time. If you don't like it, you don't pay us. Just my contact information. I know I didn't take up 10 minutes because I want to give you guys an opportunity to ask questions if you wanted to and, and cover pretty quickly. They do tell me I talk fast, too, but I'm a little caffeinated tonight. It was a, it was a long drive to get down here.
Where is home?
I'm actually in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. But I'm, I travel across the state all the time because I have clients all across the state, from El Paso to Houston to all over.
And do you have any offices down in the valley?
I do not have an office in the valley. I have service people in San Antonio, but I don't have an office down here. If we continue to grow down here, then I will get an office down here, or at least have a service person down here.
So any valley schools?
Not currently, but I'm in, besides you guys, about four more right now currently in conversations with them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You have a good night.
You, too. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Yvonne Ortega-Gon. I am the owner and CEO of Ortega-Gon Insurance Agency. It's a pleasure to be able to present in front of you, and this is Jay Ortega-Gon.
Hi, my name's Jay Ortega-Gon. I'm the Director of Operations. I'm a retired captain from the S Army, disabled veteran. Most of my expertise is in management and planning, but I've been a licensed agent, consultant, and risk manager for over five years.
So I know we, we have a time restraint. So our company background, we have over 30 years combined experience with insurance, human resources, and consulting. We are Texas Hub certified, and we are now federally certified as a women-owned small business organization. Our employee benefits consulting division comprises of five experienced bilingual agents that will be dedicated to, I'm sorry, to San Benito C I S D. We have over 20 experienced bilingual contracted agents that could be used if the district would require for enrollment. Services we would provide for San Benito C I S D is we would do a complete analysis of the self-funded medical program, provide data, and prepare analysis, and make recommendations on plan design, savings, and budget forecasts. We would do the entire RFP or competitive proposals, and we would make recommendations accordingly. We design custom presentations and administration, sorry, for administration and Board of Trustees, and we do compliance for the Affordable Care Act, Family Medical Leave, HIPAA, and Section 125. And we provide an electronic enrollment system if it would be needed for the district at no additional charge. It would integrate fees for your carriers and would provide self-enrollment or provide the employees with 24-hour access to their benefits. The types of clients, present and past, I was previously the agent of record for San Benito C I S D from October 1st of 2020, sorry, 2017 to September 30th of 2021. During those four years, I provided all the scope of services listed in this RFP. The district did not have a consultant at that time, so I served as both agent and consultant. We have Wesaco ISD, we're the consultant for City of Edinburgh, Ed Couch Elsa ISD, we previously had PSGA ISD, and we currently have Cameron County. We meet the requirements of all scopes that are listed in the RFP. Our experience in the self-funded medical program, sorry, insurance plans include over 20 years consulting experience with school districts, municipalities, and counties. Again, customer reports, which we will go over on one of the future slides. Compliance, we provide excellent customer service. We are locally owned and operated in Wesaco, Texas, and we provide proven savings. So an example of that is we went through the RFP process for school districts, self-funded medical plan, and we were able to recommend plan designs and negotiate rates with the existing insurance carrier to reduce fixed costs by 6.4%, which was approximately $115,000 for the new plan year. Another example, we conducted the RFP process for a municipality for a fully insured medical plan. The renewal rate for their medical plan was negotiated from the initial 18% to 7.9 increase, and after receiving competitive bids, we were able to recommend an equivalent plan with another carrier to reduce the renewal rate and actually provide with a 1.2 decrease. This is a copy of what we provide for the medical plan analysis. We try to make it very simple for the board and the staff to understand of where the dollars are going regarding the administrative fixed costs, which don't change throughout the year, the pharmacy claims, and the medical claims, and if there's any difference whether or not it's a shortfall or surplus, and if there needs to be any changes to your budgets. We look at your previous past claims experience to find out what the performance has been for, say, the last two, three years to try to, in order to make recommendations for budgets for the future years. And we do a detailed spreadsheet that combines a lot of, a lot of information that we get from your carriers in order to provide you with forecasts of what your fixed costs would be, what your projected claims would be, and where you would be in the claims versus premium loss ratio. Our cost of service, per the RFP, it stated that the services will conclude after the recommendation of the self-funded medical insurance, which was, which would be effective 10/1/2023. If that is the case, our annual, our fee would be $35,000. If the board decides to extend the contract throughout the plan year to be able to provide quarterly reports to the board and to administration, monthly reports, then we could do so at a fee of $55,000 for the entire year. What differentiates- And if there's any difference, whether or not it's a shortfall or surplus, and if there needs to be any changes to your budgets. We look at your previous past claims experience to find out what the performance has been for, say, the last two, three years to try to, in order to make recommendations for budgets for the future years. And we do a detailed spreadsheet that combines a lot of information that we get from your carriers in order to provide you with forecasts of what your fixed costs would be, what your projected claims would be, and where you would be in the claims versus premium loss ratio. Our cost of service, per the RFP, it stated that the services will conclude after the recommendation of the self-funded medical insurance, which would be effective 10/1/2023. If that is the case, our annual, our fee would be $35,000. If the board decides to extend the contract throughout the plan year to be able to provide quarterly reports to the board and to administration, monthly reports, then we could do so at a fee of $55,000 for the entire year. What differentiates us from other consulting firms? I've worked as an administrator for a school district managing their entire self-funded medical program several years ago, and their voluntary insurance, actually was the Hoya ISD. Locally owned and operated, and we work hard to get you the best plan design at the best cost for the district and for your employees. We take a hands-on approach by auditing all your insurance carrier bills and payroll deductions to make sure there's no discrepancies and that they're resolved in a timely manner, at least in the beginning of the year. And if you allow us to continue throughout the year, we would do so throughout the year. In summary, we believe in giving 110%, and we thrive because our knowledge of working with school districts, municipalities, and counties here in the Rio Grande Valley. And we work tirelessly to earn a well-deserved reputation for superior customer service satisfaction, and we provide a great team behind our service. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions, board members? Thank you, Ms. Ortega-Gon.
Thank you.
You ready? Good evening. How are you guys? We'll be presenting from Valley Risk Consulting. I have Roger Garza here and Jonathan Sakulinski and myself, Linda Billings. We will be presenting for your consulting services for benefits. A little bit about us. Valley Risk Consulting was created to assist school districts with their risk management needs, with over 100 years combined public entity experience, with 42 of those years being in the self-funded arena, over $125 million in annual self-funded health benefits and contributions under management with Valley Risk Consulting. And we're centrally located in the Valley in McAllen, so we're just hop, skip, and a jump away from you guys. A little bit about our team, we have Roger Garza. He's employee benefits and the risk management consultant in the public sector. Then we have Jonathan Sakulinski with employee benefits and the risk management as well in the public sector. We have Javier Leal with the analytics and medical network development, again with the public sector. We have Richard Garza with the enrollment and ancillary services and property and casualty, again, public sector specialty. And then myself, enrollment and ancillary products, property and casualty, again, in the public sector specialty.
A little bit taller than Linda. So my name is John Sakulinski. I'm one of the consultants with Valley Risk. What we're providing today is some of our services. So our main specialty is working with your administration staff and purchasing staff to design RFPs that specifically tailor your school district needs. Some of our expertise is in self-funding and medical. That's what we tip our hat on. What we focus on is the auditing your plan to see where we can enhance your plan, where we can lower the fixed costs, where we can look at your pharmacy benefit managers, your pharmacy spend, if we can potentially look at carving out your specialty program to do international pharmacy to help reduce your claims costs. That's something we look at, and we've done with multiple school districts across the Valley. Once we do take out for RFP for your products, your employee benefits, your property and casualty, we work hand-in-hand with your administration staff, your purchasing, to evaluate and tabulate all your proposals to make sure they're the most competitive for your school district. So one of the great things with Valley Risk is we have a very good relationship with some of the largest stop-loss carriers in the Valley for your medical or for your self-funded workers' comp. So we have some of the most competitive stop-loss rates because of our negotiating skills. We have McAllen, we have Brownsville, some of the larger school districts in the Valley, and they have some of the most competitive rates. And last but not least is we, one of some of our specialties right now, which I think your administration mentioned earlier, we are fighting a higher increase in insurance across the board, the Valley especially. We've been seeing a ton of increases. So what we have to do is, you know, take your school district out to bid, make sure if we look at self-funded options, we look at retention programs, anything like that to help save the school district money. And I'm going to hand this off to Mr. Roger Garza, our senior consultant.
Good evening, Mr. Moreno, President Moreno, and Superintendent Severon, and members of the Board of Trustees. Again, for the record, I'm Roger Garza. I'm the senior consultant at Valley Risk Consulting. I founded the firm almost 24 years ago to try to provide some type of service here locally for school districts that were in need of having some risk management services. What we developed a skilled, or kind of like a skill-based program. If you look at our programs, we look at, for example, oh, I'm sorry, we look at a three-year strategic program that we put together for you. One of the biggest faults of people, or actually, school districts ask us, what is it that we can do to control our costs? You have to develop a strategic plan that you can put in place, that you follow for three straight years. Every three years, you update it. That way, whenever there's a change in administration or personnel, they have the blueprints ready to go, and you don't have to sit there and go every year trying to increase rates on an annual basis. We track the cost and the trends. That's very important, because if you know what's going on, you got to keep track of those costs. Right now, one of the biggest problems that you're going to have in the future is the COVID claims, the long haulers, we call them. Those are the people coming up with respiratory issues. A lot of companies aren't telling you, a lot of consultants don't know about it, but if you don't come up with a solution about the long haulers, those are the ones that are going to bankrupt your plans as you move forward or make it more costly than you should have. So we try to basically control those costs. The other one is the benchmarks. We're going to set a benchmark for San Benito ISD. The benchmark is what your actual costs are and the net costs are. So you'll know exactly what it is, what the difference is between what you fund and what you pay. The other ones are the monthlies and quarterly reviews. If you're not keeping track of how much you're spending and how much you're taking in in revenue, then your plan will always be in the red or basically just above the black line. We're going to assist you in developing a specialty network just for the district. What we've done in other school districts is we've developed an international program where they can buy their high-cost prescription drug plans from an international program, and you're able to save a third of the cost. This is something that's not new. It's been done in northern school districts by Canada, Washington, Cook County ISD is one of the big districts. But in this particular case, we introduced this program about two years ago to two school districts, and now it's starting to pick up steam. So you're going to see a lot more of that, and you'll be able to save approximately about $1 million, $2 million a year in prescription drug cost. And these are only on specialty claim costs. We bring 42 years, or actually, these are some of the conditions or some of the programs that we have, but to sum it up, we have 42 years of self-funded experience. That's all I've ever done back since 1980. We've been doing self-funded programs. We inspire ownership. We want you to become part of that program. So we actually want to, we want to make participation very active. We take employees first. That's the most important thing. We have solutions that bring results. We always, we have a saying that we can't expect different results if we're using the same tools. And this is what we try to do. We try to do something different. We want San Benito ISD to implement programs that other school districts aren't utilizing. And then when you see the results, those results will be on balance sheets. We have, we are strictly fee-based management, risk management consultants. That's what we do. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. What are the school districts that you represent in the Valley?
Oh, actually, there. Right there. Sorry about that. These are, some of the school districts we do, some of the cities that we have. There's a lot more. Actually, we do about 18 to 22 a year. Sometimes they call us up and they want us to do a program for them. We manage it, we complete it, and then they'll call us back the following year. And sometimes when we have multi-year contracts that we get for them, they'll call us after those multi-year contracts are over.
What are the fees? I know it's in the RFP. The fees?
The fees? We have a fee schedule that we submitted. I don't have it here in front of me, but...
Does anybody have their...
But it's available.
Yeah, I have it in my car.
What I do want to share with you is that of all these entities that you see up here that are self-funded, their funding levels have been consistent and capped for the last three and a half to four years, while other school districts are making adjustments. And you've heard it from accounting that, you know, you got increased rates. We try to cap them for you. So one of the pet peeves that I always brag about is we had workshops during the onset of COVID, and we warned and asked school districts, our clients, to fund those programs before they got worse. So while everybody went into shutdown, they had already were prepared to fund those claims. And we were able to offset a lot of that sudden spike in claims. So we were very, very fortunate to be able to do that.
Any questions, board members? We thank you all.
Thank you very much. You all have a great evening.
You as well.
That was the last one.
All righty, we move on to the next agenda item under 2.5, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of revisions to BED local. Ms. Severon?
Yes, sir. I recommend that the board approve the revisions to BED local as presented and discussed.
Ms. Severon has made a recommendation that we approve revisions to BED local as discussed. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Oscar Madrono. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Frutoso Gomez. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, next item is, oh, and going back to item 2.4, board members, we're going to take that into executive session to discuss, so we may bring it back out into open. Okay? So just for the record. So next item is closed meeting. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, the board may move into closed session for the following reasons. Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. And section 551.082, certain school board deliberations. The time is 7:18, and we move into executive session.
Excuse me, we were asking for my client on item 3.5 to be held in open session. She's requested her Level 3 grievance in open session. We would object to that being held in open.
Mr. Weller?
Counsel, was this request just made or was it communicated prior to the meeting?
It was communicated prior, and there's no requirement under the law that I do that, but it was required, it was transmitted, the Level 3 grievance.
Okay.
Ms. Severon, may I speak with you for a minute? And Mr. Board President?
Now, let's keep this meeting in open until we get back. All right, Mr. Shergold, in reference to your request, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Weller. Mr. Weller?
Yeah, just for the record, we reached out to the employee that is the subject of the grievance, Ms. Lambert, and we asked her whether she wanted it in open or enclosed, and she told us she wants it enclosed, and she's sending us written confirmation to that effect. So we're going to convene enclosed to handle the Level 3 grievance.
Well, I'd just like to say that the grievance is not against Ms. Lambert. It was never mentioned that it was against her. We would ask that 10571.074B of the Texas Government Code, that my client be allowed to have her open, her case held in open public. And if you do go back in closed session, we make an objection, and we would view that as a violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Mr. Beegler, does the grievance deal with Ms. Lambert?
Ms. Lambert is, she was a Level 1 caring officer, and it was directed towards her in the sense of the assignment of duties. So in that regard, yes, in broad basis.
It was in reference to Mrs. Lambert's assignment of this employee's duties?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, how did she serve as the grievance officer?
Counsel, we're not going to argue this in open.
Listen, I would appreciate the decorum. I have a right to say this. If the grievance was against her, then why didn't she hear the case? It could be very neutral. Thank you.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Board President.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and convene in executive session. The time is 7:24.
No, the objection from my client, please.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
All right, folks, the time is 10:04, and we reconvene into open session. Before we begin with employments and resignations, I want to mention that on item 2.4, referencing discussion, consideration, and possible approval of selecting an insurance consultant for RFP 0323, insurance consultant for employee health benefits, the board has opted to table that until our next regular board meeting. So then we move into item 3.1, employment, resignations, retirements, and terminations. Item 3.2, discussion and consideration to reemploy probationary contract employees who include teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses for the 23, 24 school year. Ms. Severon?
Yes, sir. My recommendation, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. I recommend... Yes, sir. I recommend that under 4.3, 4.4, and 4.5, that the board approve those contracts, renewal term contracts and probationary as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Orlando Lopez, and a second by Dr. Cruz. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, moving on, under item 4.6, discussion and possible action regarding Level 3 M A, I will move that the board continue this matter for consideration at a later time. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Orlando Lopez. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding Level 3 P R. We, Mr. Weller, help me out with this one again, please?
I think the discussion of the, would be approval of the resolution as discussed in closed.
Okay, so we, I move that we approve the resolution as discussed in closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Orlando Lopez, a motion by Ramiro Vorena, second by Orlando Lopez. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Cruz, second by Frutoso Gomez. All those in favor? Motion carries 6-0, meaning adjourned at 10:06. Everyone, have a good night. Thank you.